Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to March 21st, Special Board of Finance meeting. Please join me for the pledge first.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you. Sorry. As you know, we have a small agenda, but any correspondence, Mary?
No.
Um, any more emails for testimony about the public hearing?
There were just, there were two more.
Yep. Okay.
We got those?
Yes.
Yeah.
Excellent. Um, okay, consideration of the minutes of the March 12th meeting. Everybody was there, I believe. Does anybody like to make a motion on that?
Make a motion.
Second.
Written. We have a motion, a second, any discussion about March 12th? Everybody there?
Bobby Joe is absent.
Bobby Joe's absent. She's absent tonight. She's got some business stuff going on. So all in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Excellent. Um, again, so the next thing is, uh, consideration of the budget. I would love to just go over what everybody thought. I, I, everybody was here, uh, there. I believe Dee was in the audience. Um, I thought it went over very well. Um, we had a lot of new faces there. Um, so we want to go around the horn, I, I, I guess. John, do you have any thoughts you want to start?
Um, I, I thought it was a great budget going into the meeting. The fact that, um, no one had anything negative or positive to say, you know, it seemed like it was a town meeting about different items that weren't associated with what we were having a meeting, but all in all, I thought it was a positive meeting because it was a reasonable budget. And I think that's what either kept people away or people that attended didn't have much to say because there wasn't much to say about a budget that was a very reasonable budget.
Okay. Thank you. Will, you want to have a comment about it?
Um, the public hearing itself, uh, nothing new there. It's pretty similar to most public hearings that we've had for the past thirty years that I've gone to. Um, as far as the budget, it concerns this tight budget. Um, I applaud both the Board of Ed and the First Selectmen, um, presenting budgets that are reasonable and adequate for the town. Um, just for me personally, um, I'm still gonna be grumbling about going against precedent, uh, instituting a raise this year versus instituting a raise for a new term, which has always been the tradition that we follow. Um, other than that, uh, again, the budget is very stout and adequate.
Good. Appreciate it. Cynthia?
I think it was quite different from all of our public hearings because there was no audible hissing or booing and, uh, nobody seemed to have a real ax to grind in any way. It was very peaceful as, as far as public hearings go. And I think it was because we worked really hard on the budget. We all worked together. We have a reasonable budget and a- as I said, the things were outside the scope, like, uh, capital pickleball. It's all they are talking about is pickleball. I feel good. I feel good about this.
I've got a town meeting coming. That also really happens.
Right, right.
Well, I would keep that going. So it's a good budget. Uh, I, I guess I've come to the position where if, if it's a quiet public hearing, then people are happy. They, they talk up, they speak up when they're not happy. And I thought it was a quiet meeting and I think that is just an issue that, uh, folks.
Hey Dee, you have some thoughts on the public hearing? You were in the audience, weren't you?
I was, I was. I'm sorry I wasn't on stage. My, um, my back has been acting up and so I couldn't ceremoniously sit up there for too long, but
I got it.
Yeah. So anyway, um, I, I actually was moved by the pickleball folks contingency, especially, um, can't remember her first name. Is it Abigail Patton? Um, who was talking about the fact that, you know, as much as pickleball is kind of, you know, interesting and bringing a lot of people to the courts, um, we're also having a hard time with tennis teams coming to our courts. And I feel like we had that discussion about getting a turf field or not getting a turf field. And I would like us to seriously consider resurfing, resurfacing the tennis courts and the feasibility of that for both the tennis teams and the pickleball folks. And hopefully we can have that discussion.
Excellent. Um, I'll, I'll throw two cents because I'm always throwing two cents in. Um, I thought the pickleball group was great there. Um, I, I understand that they're coming for something. It was just nice to see different faces. And I think they got a lot of information from that meeting that they probably didn't realize in the past. So I thought that was good. Um, one older gentleman stuck out, you know, when he was talking about, he wants to stay here. Um, and, and he, you know, wants to stay in his house and everybody's talking about all the building. But, you know, all those one bedroom apartments, uh, are, are obviously increasing the, the, the residents in town. But, you know, there's three houses on my street that the, the older people just gave up and left. And that creates more kids because those are four bedroom houses. And, and I, 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 I tend to listen to those people because I really want them to stay. You know, they built our town and they have the right to, you know, I'll say it, die in our town. I hate to see people move away and, and they're not part of our community at the end of their life. So
Because they have to.
Well, that's, yeah, no, I, well, that's my point with, with budgets. And that's why I really try to fight for the tightest budgets as we can. You know, there was a lot of brow beating and I know the First Selectmen and Dr. Carter were very good about, um, you know, keeping it to bare bones, especially after our reevaluation, uh, year. And I keep saying it, I keep saying it, but, um, those kind of people stick in, you know, my mind. Um, there were some younger people that I think picked up a lot of information and, and, you know, when you have information, I mean, I think I've changed in the last four years a ton because the more information you get, the more you realize. You know what I mean? Um, we're actually flying the plane and, and you have to watch, uh, what's going on here, you know? Mountains are coming up or, you know, they'll pull up a little higher. So, um, you know, saying that, uh, you know, capital, um, projects are, are obviously, uh, capital purchases are obviously real big. And I, I have a few thoughts for tonight and I talked to a few of you, um, about it. And, um, I know Brad has some health savings, um, which, um, I think we should be putting in the CNR account because we know we have purchases down the road. So I think it would be irresponsible to say, okay, let's just give that money to the taxpayer, knowing that we have things to buy next year and equipment and stuff, uh, vehicles. So I would, I would be in favor of putting that in the CNR. Um, and also knowing that we have some big, big purchases. We have, uh, some fire equipment to buy. Uh, we have some park and rec stuff to do. We have pickleball courts to do. I would be in favor of adding a little more to the CNR account. Um, and, and, yeah, it, it, just for the reason, uh, we know it, um, we know we're gonna have purchases, uh, coming up real soon. So let's get a head start and start paying for some of them, especially when we have a, a, a very tight budget. So, um, that's gonna be kind of where I'm going with it tonight. So, um,
I just want to confirm with Brad that the savings, the health savings is at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
So the health savings is a hundred thousand. There's additional twenty-five thousand dollars of worker comp.
Okay.
Savings. The savings that we know about right now that are reductions that I'm proposing are a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars between those two.
So Brad, um,
Actually to those accounts, but move to CNR.
Okay. Dee, please go ahead.
Brad, was that a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Did I hear?
A hundred thousand for health savings, twenty-five thousand dollars for workers comp for a total of a hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, was it about thirty years ago was the last time we touched the senior tax credit?
He wasn't even born.
I do not know. I was twelve when that happened, but I do not know.
I, I believe it is. I believe it was. Judy Novacek was the first woman at the time. And it was something I brought up with her during that campaign. She actually did it. Um, it was kind of, kind of alluded with the eventually passed. It was better than nothing. But I really think we just would, and I think I brought this up to you last year.
Well, you know, I'm a little embarrassed because I know Paula comes and we, we do as much as we can state statute and it's based on, on their income. But what other policy are you talking about or we haven't fixed?
And we haven't, we haven't touched, um, or looked at and compared our senior tax credit to the other surrounding communities.
Well, it's a state, um,
So one thing, and I think Bob to jump in on this, because he was on the committee that looked at it. The, just the recalculation this year that Paula brought to us, um, last year, the reduction to seniors was in tax dollars, five hundred and six thousand dollars. This year, as part of the mill rate calculation, it's five hundred and seventy-three.
That's cool.
Just because the calculation changed by, by the state minimums and stuff, the cost to the rest of taxpayers is sixty-seven thousand dollars more.
Because it made more people eligible because they lowered the, the income level. That's all they did. We didn't, we, we didn't increase the benefit.
Correct. Right.
Right.
But is there another program that we're talking about that we haven't acted on? I know you guys
They had a, a committee, but I don't think you ever enacted on it, right?
No, the, I'm good. Yeah. In two thousand and seventeen, there was a committee put together by the Board of Selectmen to review the various tax credits. We reviewed the elderly, uh, tax credit, the disabled tax credit. And there was a renter credit in there as well.
Was there veterans in there?
Veterans, I think, as well. Um, and we did, well, to your point, compare it to the surrounding towns. Then, can't believe I cannot say this out loud, that's seven years ago, six years ago. Our program was more generous than any of the surrounding towns.
Great.
Uh, and then what we tried to do was come up with some program regulations, you know, to Nick's point, right? Some other qualifiers in addition to income that we thought the Board of Selectmen should consider, uh, for revising the program. Those were sent to the Board of Selectmen. The folks on the committee at the time, Bob Kusowski was the chair, Anne Sceco.
Shriver was there, right?
Uh, Sarver.
Sarver, John Sarver.
Yeah.
John Sarver, Marty Lawler and then Marty drafted a memorandum and forwarded it to the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the committee. And I, I think COVID may have hit and other things may have happened, but it was sent at the time, I think it might have been that Nick Roberg or Rich Trigg and Brian Terzio.
So on the town,
Yeah.
So on the town website, the last mention of the elderly tax abatement group meeting, there was a scheduled meeting for January second, which ended up being the twenty-twenty, which ended up being canceled. And then there was supposed to be regular meetings in twenty-twenty, but obviously COVID happened in twenty-twenty. But I think you guys were like ninety-five percent of the way there. And then COVID happened and then it's, it's since.
Yeah, because we had been meeting for nearly three years and part of what personal law was the, the comparison to the surrounding communities. Uh, and I, I remember distinctly, God, I wish I, I know I, it's past three years, so I deleted those files under my personal deletion, uh, policy. But I know we, we sent our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and it had maybe about ten things to consider to in fact make our program look a little bit more like surrounding town.
You mean, what do you mean look? You know, that it presented?
It's the same. No.
Cause you just said that we were more generous than other towns.
Yeah. Um, we give out more money.
Yeah.
Uh, the percentage of tax that can be abated was a higher percentage, especially on a sliding basis. And, and John, we had some folks, I think the board would be surprised to find, uh, some of the people who were eligible, right? Because it's an income basis, income, what I used to do for a living, right? In, income can be manipulated in a way to make it seem lower. So we had some folks with homes that were very, you know, what I considered to be upper end homes, six hundred thousand dollar in assessment homes. So we, one of the suggestions, there were a number of them, but one of them was for example, have an asset test. If somebody had more than a certain number, and I don't remember what it is, let's say a million dollars, they had more than one million dollars of assets, then they weren't gonna, they weren't eligible for, for an, based on an earned income, right?
Well, earned income assets.
No, I know. The asset is what was gonna deny them benefits because their assets, you know, and you didn't find that their assets, you know, it, most people's big asset is their home, right? So they need to live in that home. So it's not really considered cash in a checkbook.
They never looked at that as an asset before. It was just based on income, right? So then the new thinking was to not just
No, I know, but the asset was gonna eliminate people that are trying to live in Bethel to now no longer be eligible for any of
The house, I believe it was.
We also looked at
You know, they might have annuities, they might have securities. Well, personal wealth.
So I have from the minutes from November twelfth, twenty nineteen, what the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and it says there shall be an asset limitation to qualify for receiving benefits under tax relief. Well, I'm gonna not read all things. Four hundred thousand dollars and then it lists five different asset types, one of them being the fair market value, any real property improvements located in the town and not the applicant's residence. So it looks like all assets other than the house.
That's great work.
How we started, uh,
No, go ahead.
How we started was looking at the letters and go, wow, that's not what I think of as somebody maybe needing assistance. And at the time, I remember the example that I used to use. I coached some, some young people who may have had a family, three or four kids, and they were not making all that much more than what the forty-eight thousand dollar cutoff was. So, right, for every dollar that we abate in one area, that, that tax liability gets allocated somewhere else.
Right, to somebody else.
To somebody else. So we, these suggestions were just in an attempt to say, well, you know, again, because income can be manipulated, you gotta stay in your house, let's look at some of these other things to see whether or not we are giving our, our important tax dollars and abatements to people.
And, and it adds to that five seventy that currently is in the budget that we're giving away to seniors to be able to afford to live in their home. You know, it, it, the burden shifts to people, like you said, younger with three kids that are just trying to also afford to live in a town that they want their kids to go to school. But it's, it's a fine balancing.
Um, I, I'm curious about looking into this a little further because to, uh, dust point, well, dust point is that maybe you make these tax increases a little bit broader to give them a little bit something because you want, you know, at the end of the day, you, you are looking at your income. You have, you have the means, you want to keep people as long as possible. A lot of the people come to talk to me about senior tax credits is they want broader, broader, even if people who have means, but they have very little actually income are trying to stay in town longer, who may want to consider that as maybe a lower rate to keep them in their house as long as. People, people are all downsizing. They're moving from their homes. And one of the problems they don't stand Bethel is there's nothing affordable to go to. That is downsized. So to our point, if we want to try to keep them a little longer, then maybe means testing is only part of it. Maybe there's a way to descend broader that rewards people for staying a little longer. So I, I just think we should consider that more forward. Um, I will certainly be happy to take this up with the Board of Selectmen because anything that has come through to the Board of Selectmen, we may be a different board, but it's still the Board of Selectmen. So we can certainly pick that up and run that.
Yeah. And, you know, early on, a few months ago, when we had John and Paula here, we talked about it. And I thought we talked about getting that committee started again, or, or at least continuing that conversation. But Dan, if you can look into that.
Have to.
Because again, you, you know, not to dumb this down, but if, if they come out of a four bedroom house, just the two of them, and they have a senior center and they're enjoying their life. But if three more kids come in there, that's forty-five thousand dollars.
The house becomes a losing proposition.
It's a losing proposition. And, and we lost great neighbors. And I mean, and, and that's really my concern, you know? I mean, the Oliver's left and I keep naming their name. Two houses down, they have three great little girls in there. But there's three girls going to Rockwell School.
I particularly like the balance because if you look what we're doing, so you know, and the number of years we're putting in, another sixteen years downtown.
Yeah.
Like it's boom, 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 boom.
Yeah.
And it's, we're having some of these homes where the folks stay in them and, you know, they have all the family come back and they can have a great place to live.
Because just the development itself is, is gonna push them out if we don't, you know, counterbalance it.
I, I didn't mean to make that say. It was four years ago.
Yeah.
That that committee kind of stopped. So maybe it does.
I can't believe we remembered it.
Well, you know.
So I'm so glad you're willing to share it again.
Maybe not show up.
I saw I thought I heard. I thought that was a motion, so if you knew.
So just to the board of those, I just forwarded to everybody on the Board of Finance, copied you on it, Dan, the minutes from the last meeting of that had the recommendations in it. Obviously, they should probably be looked at again before it goes back to the Board of Selectmen, but just because we discussed it, um, I figured I'd just send it out. Because if I don't do it in the moment, it's gone.
I know, I remember years ago, listening to some of the meetings, we didn't have internet yet, actually go to the meeting. Um, instead, some study was done where an X amount of dollars of benefit being given out, the expectation is so many more seniors would stay for the whole purpose of, you know, you, you got someone that's seventy, seventy-five years old or a couple at that age in a house. They're not gonna have kids in the school system, but as soon as they sell it, being that we have such a great school system, there's a likelihood that instead of having a taxpayer, you get a tax expenditure.
Yes.
That, that was kind of one of the driving forces back then.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I guess neighborhoods are gonna change over. I, I, it happens, you know, but
Yeah.
The house right next to me and I need to go back, you know, Jim and Nancy said, you know, five years ago, I said, or maybe it could have been eight years ago. I said, hey, you're gonna stay, right? You know, you see him start fixing it up and that usually real estate sign comes, you know what I mean? But it's, no, no, we, we, we checked with that South Ferry and, and we checked here and, and, and it's cheaper for us to stay. And that's what I want to hear from them.
Yeah.
They're okay paying, it, it, back then it was eight thousand, you know what I mean? But they're okay with spending that because comparing it to other places, it's their home. And your, their, their daughters come back home, you know, so, you know, that makes a town also, you know what I mean?
Well, it makes sense. And you can't really emotionalize it by saying, oh, we don't like kids because it's not about that. But, you know, the, the school, we just built those, renovated the schools as new and it won't take much to push that over capacity. So
And some people say it's gonna go over the edge, but let's try.
Right. Let's try to mitigate that a little bit. But anyway, that's a conversation.
Right, right. So, does anybody want to talk about pickleball or no? So that's my thoughts. Um, you know, knowing, you know, we're taking a year that, that, that it really came in low. Um, I got pushed a little bit today. Um, but, um, I've been thinking about it for a couple of weeks that, you know, if we know we got something to pay for next year, why are we not starting to pay for it now? You know what I mean? Um, especially on a year, um, and again, Mr. Carter pushed me over the edge here and I think he definitely right, you know? Um, you know, if, if we do have a couple of big purchases and we stock a little more money in, in, in that CNR, I think it's only helpful.
So applying the Manfreda principle.
Yes, 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 yeah.
The Manfreda doctrine.
Right, 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 right. So, and so, so with that statement, Nick, I agree that with a year where the budget is as low as it can be, right? And, and the year that we've had, that I agree that we should consider taking some more money and increasing the budget to increase the capital non-recurring fund because we know, we don't know exactly what's coming, but we certainly know that our town buildings need stuff. We have a lot of capital purchases coming, right? So, so I would be in agreeance to, to raise it, but, but the first thing I would want to say is if next year it came in over a three, where I think that's a reasonable number, a budget increase, new spending, that, that would be the first, you know, area that I would think that we got to take from to try to reduce the overall taxes on, on the town. I, I, I get that's an easy, and I said, I get that's an easy pick. Um, and, and it, it's an easy, low, low fruit. Um, but again, it, I went over my ministers this month. I know that, you know what I mean? So I, I think we should worry about this year and, and try to big think and worry about the needs of the town. And next year is next year. I, I get we're gonna have problems next year, but we can only deal with what we're dealing with today. You know what I mean? So Cynthia.
I just want to confirm that, that so that health savings amount that could go to CNR, right? So that's one twenty-five.
Yep.
And then how much more?
It's one hundred and then there's twenty-five.
Twenty-five and more, yeah, I didn't. Combining them. So that would bring the CNR up to what?
Seven seventy-five.
Okay, so we would need to
Three fifty. No?
No.
Two hundred and fifty more.
Twenty-five more, right.
An increase to this year's budget.
And that would increase it to
One million dollars.
Right, but two point six percent.
So, and now, no, that would Low rate increase would go to two point six percent from two point three percent.
Right.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So, I, I didn't hear if there was a motion. Are we trying to fund the CNR? To fund CNR? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there an echo? I can hear myself. I can hear myself.
No, um, Dee, we didn't make a motion yet. The, the conversation is about building it up. And Cynthia is just starting to talk about, you know, where would I like to be? And I like to be at a million, um, dollars. Um, I think that's kind of a, a, a good starting point for next year. And again, it's two and a quarter besides what Brad's savings would be. So Brad's savings is moving out of one account to, to another account, but the, the new ad, I'm sorry, the new additions to this, the budget that we talked about would be two and a quarter, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And so that would mean we fund
That would mean we fund CNR at a million for this year.
Million for this year.
Exactly. For this budget we're working on, yeah.
And what is our balance, current balance? Yeah, current balance.
It's, it's a million and I think a million thirty right now is as hands unallocated.
So unallocated and as of today is just over a million dollars in the CNR account. Um, there are gonna be more, some of that is gonna be spent before June thirtieth. We know that because there are capital needs that need to be done. Um, and that just starts to fund some of the capital list for twenty-five.
You understand that take, just over a million right now sitting in that account? And then as of July one, we'll have an, another million as our, is, is, is the ask tonight, basically.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. And Brad, do we have any other revenue? Are we paid for the lots, not paid for the lots? What, can you kind of give us an update?
So, two of the lots we've been paid for, um, one is in the process of being sold, but we haven't, hasn't closed yet. And the other one, there's still fielding offers on, right?
Um, so we have an additional, I'm sorry, three fifty?
What's the one hasn't closed?
Yeah, exactly.
I will tell you.
It's the third lot and we just haven't got the monies yet.
Right. Just wanting to know how much.
So the one that we sold twenty-one and twenty-three, those are closed. Uh, twenty troll bridge, the estimate I have is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred.
So that money per the way that was set up, that is gonna be dumped right into the general.
So it's under contract or pending?
Yeah.
I think it's, yeah, I think Marty's handling that because he's been handling the other sales.
Okay.
Um, and the estimate for the one that we don't have a firm offer on yet is three hundred and fifty thousand. That's nineteen troll bridge.
So, so why don't I start making a few motions to clean this mess up a little bit? Cause there's a, cause there's two halves, right? There's a clean half and a dirty half, right? Cause, cause we're just gonna transfer what we already approved into one account to another account. And then we'll talk about the additional spending.
Yes, there you go.
So, so I think they should be all done separately. So I'd like to make a motion that we take, that we transfer one hundred thousand dollars from account ten dash three ninety hospitalization and then transferred into the non-recurring capital account ten four twenty.
And then you have to do three year reductions.
Yeah.
And then group vote on that, the, the, the ten dash four twenty separate.
Because it's gonna have a new total.
And then you gotta look department by department. So you
For the new totals.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, so we're gonna, so we're reducing line number, uh, account number ten dash three ninety hospitalization by a hundred thousand dollars to make the new total six million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars.
I'll second that.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second. And obviously everybody knows it's, it's savings, Brad. It came in at two percent.
Yeah. So the original budget estimate, the state was saying three to five percent. The state, um, finalized the numbers at two percent. So that's
So that was a little disappointing. We thought it was gonna be better, right?
No, we're, we're happy. They were talking about going up three to five and they're actually only going up two.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, right. So this is a motion you don't want to not vote for.
No pressure there.
All right. Everybody knows what's going on. I got a little chuckle on everybody. That's good. Um, so, uh, let's try to raise my, if there's no other discussion, everybody in favor of that motion. See what I'm saying?
Hi.
Hi.
Dee, you're good, right? Please? Are you, no, are you a maybe or?
Can you guys hear me? Okay? Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes, yes.
I can hear you okay.
Sounds like there's an echo. Should I hang up and log back in?
Hang up and log back in. Is there anyone?
No, you're, you're not hurting us. As long as you're okay.
The echo is only on your side, Dee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion that we transfer So I'd like to make a motion that we transfer the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from account number ten dash two ten. Um, and the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and transfer to the nonrecurring account ten dash four twenty. I'm sorry, reduce it twenty-five. And it would make the new total one million three hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
I'll second that.
Excellent. So we have a motion, a second, again, alleged savings, Brad, right? I mean, yeah, pretty much. All right, uh, all in favor on that motion, please, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Great. So do you want me to make the motion so it's more of a discussion now?
Yeah.
Technically, yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that we add two hundred and twenty-five, I can't believe it, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
No, it's three fifty altogether.
It's going to be three fifty, and that would raise the the bottom line.
Because we didn't have to, you haven't transferred in it yet.
Right.
So if we weren't going above the the million, and we, it would be one twenty-five. But to get to the million, it's additional two twenty-five on top of the one.
Just make the motion for the for the.
So to get to a million, you got to do three fifty.
But it, but it's it's not going to change the mill rate calculation because the hundred and twenty-five was already calculated in the math.
So the hundred and twenty-five does not change the two point three, the additional two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five is what gets the statistics up.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion, then we add three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to account number ten dash four twenty, the capital nonrecurring account. And that would make the new total one million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Thank you. Okay, so we we have a second discussion. I'm sorry, why is that total now now? The total in the CNR?
It's the whole department.
Oh, the whole department. Yeah, yeah, great, okay, excellent. So everybody, uh, again, I I think we not beat it to death, because I think it's very important, um, but everybody knows what our pen is.
That number's right, Pat, right?
Yeah. All right, all right, so I'll try everybody's mind, and this would be, uh, everybody in favor, please say my saying aye. All right, in the capital. Wait, I need to.
Hi.
All right. Thank you. Um, again, I appreciate everybody's support on it. I think it's the right thing to do. You know, sometimes I think too small, and I'm trying to think bigger, um, this this is a big, big thinking. Um, and I think it's a, you know, for Cynthia and I had a long debate today, um, you know, we have to act like adults, right, Cynthia? Isn't that what you said?
Well, what did you say that you did, what did, yeah, what did he say you did to? No, it was bad, not bad, I was pressured, what did you say? Yeah, browbeating, yeah, there was some browbeating.
But we did that on the phone. He's got a little emoji, it's pretty cool.
Look, I got your pencil lined in, it's so much browbeating.
Well, I know the discussion already ended, but I think that because the budget was so lean and and appropriate for the town, this is a year to do it, you know?
Yeah.
Um, you know, but every year is different, so we're 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 in this year, and I think we're given a reasonable budget for for the town and and for the last three months, I've heard some serious numbers talking about capital items, so I so I guess we start saving for it now.
And and I would like to just add, Cynthia, again, just because we have the money, it doesn't just mean we just throw it out, we have to be very conservative about it and 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 prove what is needed, you know, I think that's very important, just because there's money in there.
Yeah, and I I want to say, Bob, the other night, I I think when you were spoke at the at the town meeting, and you said, if you can't afford the purchase, you certainly can't afford paying interest on it, and I thought that was, you know, I left thinking about that comment, and I think that's very important for all of Bethel to think that way, you know? Cynthia.
I just wanted to say that just from a perspective of someone who's, um, you know, been fighting the fight for many years. That this was the first time I've experienced, um, the budget process in such a way that you could really see clearly everything that was falling into place and keeping it reasonable, and it really was a group effort. And it made it easier to see and understand why this is so important to put the money into the CNR.
I would agree.
Just just to add to that, the million is a huge number, it's a big number.
Thank you.
What's even bigger is our needs. And so when I look at that list.
Yeah.
It takes my breath away.
Yeah.
It is preparing for tomorrow.
Yes.
With it kind of in a smooth glide path, right, so that we don't end up with a big hockey stick.
Yeah.
So I I think it's true.
It wasn't that long ago that the funding was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for like as far back as that. You know?
And and the same thing in the road account.
Yeah.
You know, we know we need to spend money on roads, and it's it's a real number now. It's not a number that you, we got to try to keep putting Band-Aids on all year long. If we spend a million dollars on roads, we know we're doing the right thing for the for the townspeople.
And in good times, it's a good time to put money in this account, because you know we have the capital needs for it.
Right.
And really, you're just trading an asset for an asset, because we buy assets, it's capital items or assets.
Something we're going to own.
Yep.
And again, when I first got on this board, I sat over there, everybody ignored me, I get it.
Oh, come on. No hard feelings.
Well, I guess it didn't affect him, he's still talking about it. I'm still hurt by it. Bobby was always very respectful, saying, I really appreciate your input, but we're going to.
Sign for a seminar.
We're having fun. Exactly, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in. But Brad had said that we are on a seventy year no carb, no spending diet.
No carb.
And and that really stuck with me, and and I think we're on that plane. And I think this only helps to nurse us all on. I was in favor of spending fifty thousand dollars last year to get the roofs a couple more years down the road, you know what I mean? Because again, we just can't go bond something again, we we're paying for sixty million dollars and fifteen million for the police department, so we're trying to get to that point, you know what I mean? So, um, and I'm, you know, that's why I'm being a little tight about it, you know what I mean? So, but do we need a motion on the final number again?
Yeah, so.
And does John have that? The ninety, the ninety-two?
Well, you need the town total first, the thirty-seven, seven, seven.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the amount of thirty-one million nine hundred and eleven dollars and and I'm sorry. Thirty-one million nine hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and eleven dollars for the town's portion.
That's the town operating, so it's, the numbers, and I don't know if I put it on the wrong sheet, so the the total town budget is thirty-seven, seven hundred and seven thousand ninety-seven dollars. Um, which includes the town operating of thirty-one million nine eleven.
Oh, got you, got you, right.
Debt service and the board.
Got you, that one was together now.
Oh, stop.
You don't want to do education maintenance and debt.
Too late for that, too late for that.
So that's John's motion, and Mary and Mary got the new number down. So it's only a motion.
I'll second it.
The town side of the budget.
This is the town operating and the school.
Yeah, school.
Everything on the town side, yes, exactly, so. All right, so and again, that would pick up the the two twenty-five.
That picks up exactly twenty, exactly.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, is any discussion about that? Uh, all in favor, single saying aye?
Aye.
And that would bring the new total, including the Board of Education, to ninety-two million four hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
And if you, if Mr. Jeremy, if you don't mind, that could be my motion to approve?
Yeah, sure, do we have a second?
I'll second your motion.
All right, we got a second. All right, so any other discussion on the two, the the total new number? All right, everybody go there, I'll try everybody's mind, everybody in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All right, again, I I think um our business is done, and I think it was a good budget season, I appreciate everybody's patience. Um, and I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make your motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, any other thing, all in favor of both, let's go with saying aye? Dee, thank you for getting on, okay?
Good luck with the back.